January 16th, 2025, regular meeting of the Camden County Board of Elections Registration is called to order. All members are present. Please rise for the opening ceremonies. Please join me in a moment of silence for the victims of the New Orleans Bourbon Street terrorist attack and the California wildfires. Thank you. Don't forget about the victims of the North Carolina also.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Are there any amendments or corrections to the agenda? There being no amendments or corrections, the agenda?
Chairman?
Yes.
I would ask that, under the new business reorganization, that we table that until the next month.
So we can do that when we get to it?
Okay.
There being no amendments or corrections to the agenda, as adopted as presented. Has everyone had a chance to look at the November 8th and December 6th, 2024 special call board meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any corrections or amendments to those meeting minutes?
No.
None.
There being no corrections or changes, these minutes are approved as written. Moving on to the first public comments for agenda items only, no public comments. All right, election supervisor update. Shannon, you have the floor.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to welcome Ms. Robyn Maynor Knight as our newest board member. Congratulations. I met with Robyn this morning at Judge Swett's office for her swearing in, so she is official official. And she has the oaths have been taken care of, so we are glad to have you. Welcome aboard.
Oh, yeah, definitely welcome aboard.
Let's see. All right, I think the first thing I'm going to talk about, you all should have in your binders, an advanced voting proposed schedule. Oops, that's not it. I didn't put it back.
And there was a copy on the back table also.
Oh, it's right here. Okay, so staff and I always kind of sit down, go over what we believe is best for the voters and what we can accomplish in early voting for this particular election. We have a March 18th election. And what we are proposing, we obviously, we have to have three weeks of advanced voting. So we will do that at the annex, both Saturdays as well, and you can see the dates labeled there for your convenience. Woodbine, we're going to do in our office as well, same times as the annex location. So that way, there's no confusion with the public. So all three sites would be 7:30 to 5:30 weekly. It's just the dates are a little different. We do one week here in Woodbine, and we have been been given some time in St. Mary's, at the Welcome Center as well, for one week, and one Saturday. Let's see, so we'll do, we have, the very first Saturday is only at the annex. The second Saturday, we'll have in all three locations. And nine to five is the required time for early voting on Saturdays. SPOLOST election, I know the county is working on many things to promote the SPOLOST and kind of talk about it and what it involves. It's an $85 million project, so they are working on details. I'm still working on my ballot. I just say that because I don't know how much turnout we will have, but we, we don't think it'll be as busy as November, obviously. So that's why we would like to propose these dates. Do you have any comments or feedback? Everybody think these are okay?
There was a question earlier about why are we having advanced voting in Woodbine and St. Mary's and the annex? And can you talk a little bit about who's covering the cost of this election?
So this is a county, a countywide election, but we're having St. Mary's and Woodbine as well as the annex because all three cities are involved in the $85 million total list. Now, if you all would like to consider billing the cities for part of this election, I can check into that.
Actually, I think it's in the memo.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we, yes, yeah. So that's, we wanted to give a week in St. Mary's, a week in, in Woodbine because they're
They're paying for it.
Yeah, it's their projects too. So the, the county and the cities have worked collaboratively, collaboratively, along with the city of Woodbine. I haven't mentioned them, but they've been in the loop as well. And so, and it affects all the, all the citizens in Camden who are registered to vote.
Any questions on the advanced voting dates and times?
Good?
They don't have to vote on it, but yeah.
Okay, awesome. And we'll get those published right away. Okay, let's see what else I had on my list. Okay, and speaking of invoices, invoices to the cities went out today for the runoff election in December. And if you talk to your council members or your commissioners, I mean, there's a little bit of a difference. St. Mary's had a lot more voters than Kingsland, so the price, the invoice price were kind of reflects that. But we do go back to the, we wouldn't have had that election had it not been for the runoffs that were necessary for those two cities. So I go back and bill them for my ballot paper, my enterprise rental trucks, my time, my staff, my poll workers. So they have received, both, both cities have already sent me a message that they've received their invoices and are getting it to finance.
Shannon, just to clarify, we can give this to the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll go, the schedule will go up on the website as soon as possible now that it's been, we've given it to you guys. Okay?
It'll also run in the newspaper.
Yes, yeah. We are currently in the office preparing for the March 18th special election. Leona already has the schedule done for me with poll workers, which is fantastic. Three weeks of early voting at all three sites, at least for a week. She's got staff lined up for that. We have training dates set. We've sent out invitations for, for that. We have the poll worker scheduled for Election Day. The text for the ballot with the actual SPOLOST question is still in the works. So I'm working on that. There's, it's quite lengthy. It's a lot of projects. And I'm, we're trying to figure out the best way to get it on the ballot. So we're working on that, hopefully have that soon. Because the sooner I have my ballot info sent to the state, the sooner we can get our election project in. And we can't do anything until we get our election project. So like Dennis has to do logic and accuracy soon. And I was going to run the ad, turn the ad in tomorrow to run in next week's paper, which, because we have to run logic and accuracy ads five days before we start logic and accuracy testing. So with our paper only running on a Thursday, I'm just not positive I'm going to have the project in time. So we're, we're figuring that out right now. Okay? So the goal is to start logic and accuracy testing, not this Tuesday, but next Tuesday, right? Yep.
Right, so the ad will have to run next Thursday.
If, if I know I'm going to get the project.
I mean, I would say run the ad, and if the project doesn't come in, we can postpone it. We can, you know, move the logic and accuracy. It's a whole lot easier to move the logic and accuracy after it's already published than waiting for it to be published so we can actually start.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't going to wait. I was just making sure that I knew tomorrow where we were with our ballot wording. Yeah. Uh, I do know that on the agenda for Tuesday night's commissioner meeting is the appointment of our District 3 seat for the Board of Elections with Mr. Cody Smith. And I haven't really had a chance to interact with him, so I'm not certain what, what is going to happen on Tuesday night. Both Kelly and Dawn Gray have applications in. Those are the only two people from District 3 that we've gotten applications for. So typically commissioners select from the candidate, the person that they want on the board. But like I said, I, and I usually have a little conversation with that commissioner, but we'll see. I'm not sure how that's going to go on Tuesday, but it is on the agenda. We are hosting our Region 14 meeting on February the 5th here in Camden. That's a group of election offices from the southeast side of the state. And we'll invite them over for speakers with Dominion and No Ink. Who else? SOS, the Secretary of State will come. Our liaison, Erin, will probably come. And we kind of just give an update to the group that comes to the regional meeting on. So we all have a chance to talk and communicate and give each other some updates on what's been happening in our different counties.
Ms. Shannon, can you repeat that date one more time?
Yep, it is February 5th. You'll get invitations. It's, it's probably from 9:30 to 2:00, and we serve lunch. And the only other thing I had was GAVRIO, which I think I mentioned before. Make sure your calendars are marked for August 12th, I mean, I'm sorry, August 10th through the 13th. GAVRIO is our organization, professional organization that election officials in the state of Georgia belong to. And we have an annual conference. This year, it's scheduled in Savannah from the 10th through the 13th.
And we normally encourage the new members of the board to go to that.
Yeah.
Not mandatory, but highly suggested.
And I think that's it, board members. Anybody have any questions for me?
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Yep.
Financial report, November and December 2024, month end reports.
I don't know if you all have had a chance to look over this yet. The December report was preliminary, but I did get the updated version yesterday, I think. And it was, it was pretty much the same. I think she might have paid one or two more bills, a fuel bill and a supply bill. But if you look at November, we were at 40.68% of the budget. Now in December, that we paid everybody for November and December, we're at 53.4%. So keep in mind, I sent out bills to the city, I think it was about $22,000. So we'll get that back in our budget as well. And then we have the March election, and we have a June election as well for the Public Service Commissioner seat. And both of those elections are in this fiscal year. Any questions on the budget?
I mean, do you think we're going to have enough money to get to the end of the year with two elections?
Yes.
Okay, without having to go back to the Board of Commissioners?
And, and we might, but it wouldn't be for much. Yeah. Okay.
Helps out that, that all four cities are paying, or three cities are paying for this next election, plus the county, so that helps.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you, Ms. Shannon.
Yep.
Moving on to new business, introduction of new Board of Election Registration member, Ms. Robyn Knight Maynor. Shannon already took our thunder, but
Already stole your time. I mean, I didn't want to start talking and we not have introduced her yet, so.
Welcome to the best Board of Election Registration in the state of Georgia.
Absolutely.
All right.
Glad to be here, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we're moving on to reorganization, the 2025, 2026 Board of Election Registration. I put this on there because it is required that we look at this for the first meeting of the year. And I do realize that we don't have all of the members set right now. So I will take a motion to postpone until the February meeting, if anyone would like to make that a motion.
I'm going to make the motion to postpone it till we get things settled.
Okay, second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Kyle, can I just say one thing about that?
Yes.
The, I know in our bylaws, and those are on the website, the most recent bylaws talk about the process for the reorganization. And then the board chairman does go over the process when you get in there. But you can always check that out on the, on the bylaws to see how the reorganization goes. It talks about the nomination and how you don't need a second and, from the board members and things like that. So just make sure you know how that works before we go into the next time we do it.
Yeah, I'm actually required to hold training prior to the reorganization. So we'll have a little training session, and then we'll go right into reorganization. Okay? Any questions about that? All right, your favorite thing of the day? Training, presented by me. So I presented this training to our election supervisor earlier this year, and I got a bless your heart. You really tried, but I'm going to send this to Dennis, and Dennis is going to fix this for you. So that's where we're at today. Dennis fixed it. All right, if we could bring up the training, please?
Oh. You want me to do that? I guess I need, that's why he has the clicker here. Yeah. Wait back. Oh, shoot.
Hey, am I doing this, guys, or yeah? Oh, yeah, it was in my packet I sent y'all.
In the packet?
Yes, the last, last thing in the packet.
But everybody does have the PowerPoint in their book. We could start by going through the book.
All right. Oh, my goodness. Who copied this? All right, we're going to go over poll, poll officers today, and first item is the managers and assistant managers. Each polling location will have one chief manager and two assistant managers. That is by code. Managers are appointed by the election supervisor. Political parties involved in the election may submit a list of qualified persons to appoint to be poll managers or poll officers. But this consideration is optional. Appointments are public records and available for public inspection.
He, he got it up here.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, next page, going on to clerks.
Okay, now I can do it?
Yep, next, next, Shannon's got it.
Maybe, maybe if I did it the right way. Is it the back arrow goes forward, or the, is it normal?
If you look on the bottom, the relevant, the relevant code to each of these is on the bottom of the page. All right, well, if we're figuring that, we'll go over to clerk, go over clerks. The election superintendent shall appoint a sufficient number of clerks to staff each polling location. And depending on the polling size, that's how many clerks you'll have. Duties are voter checking at poll pad, poll pad stations, assisting voters near the voting booth, and monitoring the ballot scanner. All right, the poll officer stationed in the voting area, there's, there should be two vote stationed in the polling area. One to assist the voters, and the other one is actually at the ballot scanner. So if we have two ballot scanners, there'll actually be three people back there. Each ballot scanner must have one person assigned to the ballot scanner. And poll officers, they'll also display a badge showing their name, inform the voters availability of sample ballots, take precautions to avoid seeing the voters' choices. Now, if they have signed up and they, they have selected a poll officer to be their assistants, to assist them, a poll officer may assist voter in voting. Ask voters if, have you reviewed your paper ballot to make sure that the, they have, their selections they made on the BMD match what's on their paper ballot. And we definitely make every attempt to prevent a voter from leaving with their paper ballot. Because once they leave the enclosed area, it isn't, we cannot accept that paper ballot. Okay? And qualifications, they must be, for poll officers, they must be judicious, intelligent, and upright United States citizens. Residents of otherwise employed by the camp, by Camden County. Now, we can use adjacent county poll workers if we don't, don't have enough for our, of our own. But that does require a, an agreement between us and the, and the county. Yeah, must be 16 years of age. That's why this, we use the STEP program, the Student Training Ed, Election Program. And you must be able to read, write, and speak English language. Eligible for nomination to public office in a given election. And you cannot be related to any of the public officers that may be coming in to vote at your polling location. And qualified and trained to perform their duties. All right, before assuming the office of the poll officer appointees must be duly sworn in the presence of each other. The chief manager first is sworn by the assistant manager. And then the assistant manager and clerks are sworn by the chief manager. Nothing can happen in the polling location until the oaths are sworn in. Immediately sign and take the oath, and have the oath attested by the officer who administered it. All right, training. There's really no set requirement or time for training, but it says that the election superintendent shall provide adequate training to poll officers prior to each primary and election. And that, except for special primaries, elections, or runoffs held immediately following a general primary election. Provide each poll officer a certificate upon training completion. So they must have the certificate before they can be assigned to a polling location, except in an emergency. And notify the Secretary of State of the dates of the training, and call poll officers to meetings for the purpose of training. And of course, they get compensated, and that is a fixed compensation. And it's paid by the election superintendent out of their budget from the county commissioners. And if you want to volunteer, we will always accept volunteers, but you will not get paid to be a volunteer. And if you're interested in becoming a poll officer, here's the contact information. All right, thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. Good job.
Yes, he learned from Dr. McCullough, so good job, both of you. She'll talk to you after the meeting.
Our performance is great, the presentation and
I, I do want to say something about that real quick. For this March election, just to give you an idea, of course, we have to open all 11 precincts. So we, I think we have 63, 65 poll workers scheduled for this election to work on Election Day. And then they all get an opportunity to work during early voting to kind of refresh, although it hasn't been that long. I can't believe I was already sending out an email saying, it's time to train again. So they, they all will get training because it is required by law. So we have three training sessions that'll be set up in mid-February for them. And that, like the November election, I think we had 90, 95 people. So it gives you an idea of, you know, the, kind of the difference, it's a little bit smaller election, even though it's a very, very important election, I, it's a little bit different, and it's just one thing on the ballot. And so that's the, that's the big difference.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No.
All right, important upcoming dates, Martin Luther King Jr. Day is Monday, January 20th, 2025. All, all county offices will be closed. Logic and accuracy testing begins for the special election on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025.
We hope.
Oh, it's going to start.
Yeah.
Deadline to publish advanced voting notice for the March 18th special election is Monday, February 10th, which is actually, we'll have to back that up until the Thursday, but that is the deadline. President's Day is Monday, February 17th, 2025. Last day to register to vote for the March 18th special election is Tuesday, February 18th, because Monday's an actual holiday. Next Board of Election Registration regular meeting will be Thursday, February 20th at 4:00 p.m., and it'll be here in the chambers. Political parties, the deadline to provide poll watcher designation letter for advanced voting to election supervisor is Friday, February 21st at 2025, for your poll watchers. And advanced voting begins for the special election, and first day to issue absentee ballots for the March 18th special election will be Monday, February 24th, 2025. And that is it for all these special dates.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot two things. I forgot to let Rock speak, and he has an update. So we're going to turn it over to Rock, and then I have one more thing after that.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
During the course of December, we had over 1,600 voter contacts, which is relatively high for one month. But basically, that's because state law keeps us from updating any voter files from October 7th until the election is certified, which also encompasses the advanced voting period. So we did do that, and, but Jarvis is up to date as of today. And that's thanks to our hardworking team led by Dennis and Leona.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rock stars.
They keep us going. Now, we also have connected with Camden County High School, and the STEP program will pick up this semester.
Oh, good.
At currently, we have big feet, but you know. We currently have approximately 25 students that are eligible to participate. The permission forms were sent to Mrs. Adina Geis today. Geis. Geis. I went to school with someone named Geis, but Adina Geis, they were sent to her, and we're waiting for those permission forms to return. Okay?
And those students have to attend to training as well.
That was the next point. That was the next point.
I thought you were going on to that.
No, 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 no. The training dates, February 11th, training will be held from 5:00 to 9:00. February 12th, 1:00 to 5:00. February 13th, 8:30 to 12:30. And they will all be held here in Woodbine. And one date I wanted to just add was March 7th is the last day to accept absentee ballot applications.
March 7th?
That completes my report.
Thank you, Rock, and I apologize. And then, did anyone look at today's paper? This is just a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you see the giant sploß ad in there?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure somebody else saw it.
Social media too.
Okay, well, I haven't looked there, but, and I probably won't. So, okay, thank you. That just starts the one, that was like the call for the election that we're required to put in there by law. It could have been a little bit shorter, but we wanted to make sure we got all of the information out. It's required by law to be in the paper four more times preceding Election Day.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Anything else? All right, public comments for any items? Can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
Does that mean that Woodbine is not going to have their municipal election this year?
It should be. What do you mean, it's not on the calendar? Like, on the single sheet or on the calendar calendar?
It's on the calendar.
I mean, on your, you post your meeting days, and you have that your meeting days are not on the, on the third Thursday, but on the Tuesday, the Friday immediately after the election. And so you've got that listed for your March and your June meetings, but you didn't have it missed. Was that an oversight, or do you not anticipate having a municipal?
It was both an oversight and the fact that Woodbine doesn't always have the election, because they don't always have enough qualified candidates. So it's, we can always call a special call for that, for the 3 o'clock certification meeting, but it was an oversight on my part to begin with.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
It's based on history of Woodbine and their voting.
Yeah, so we'll know more about the city of Woodbine. I believe it's on the calendar, calendar on the website, I saw it.
It's on the calendar, calendar, but the actual meeting, the November meeting, we normally would have that on the Friday.
The Friday after, oh, and it's got the wrong date.
It's not, yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have the Friday after the election. It has the third Thursday of the month.
Because we do anticipate an election, because that's the Public Service Commission, or General. Their primary is in June. Their primary is in June, so whether Woodbine has any qualifiers, which we won't know until like August, we
We will have them.
We should have a Public Service Commission race.
Probably October, I'll call a special call for that.
Yeah, we can just make a change to the schedule.
Any other public comments? If there are no objections, this meeting will adjourn? Since there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.